I'd like to call the June 1st meeting of the Stanley County Board of Education to order. Greatly appreciate everyone in attendance this evening. This time, I'm going to ask Ms. Poplin if she will have the pledge of allegiance and the invocation.
If you would stand for the pledge.
(inaudible)
Dear Heavenly Father, we want to thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here tonight. Thank you for all of our blessings. I pray for our administration and staff, in particular for this assembled board. I'm asking that you grant us wisdom to govern and make decisions that are in the best interest of all of our staff and students. I pray for the agenda that's set before us tonight. We ask for your guidance throughout this meeting and that all of our thoughts and actions would reflect your holy will. In Jesus' name, amen.
This time, our agenda calls for recognition of staff, and I'm going to ask Dr. Dennis if he will proceed, please.
Good evening Chairman Chance and members of the board. I'm excited to close out the 2020-2021 school year with some very special recognitions of our very own staff. The 2020-2021 school year has been unlike any other. Teachers and students have reorganized and found themselves in new places. They have been deep in the trenches of remote learning, working through the challenges of not being in face-to-face environments every day. Our teachers have worn many different hats to help keep our schools moving forward, building relationships with students and their families. But through the changes, one thing has remained consistent. Both staff members and families of Stanley County School students have worked hard to ensure our students are taken care of. We have remained steadfast in the support we have given, promising to do what is best for our children. To our school leaders, our teachers, our teacher assistants, our counselors, our office support, our custodians, our cafeteria workers, our bus drivers, I thank every single staff member of Stanley County Schools for all you do to continue for our schools and students. Today is a celebration. What better way to end the 2020-2021 school year than by recognizing some of our very own dedicated Stanley County Schools employees? While we have a vast staff that is dedicated to the success of our students and communities, we come together today to recognize four outstanding individuals. In addition, June Berry Ridge has graciously awarded each nominee and award recipient tonight four tickets to the June Berry Jams concert on Saturday evening. June Berry plans to honor all educators, but those recognized tonight are to be congratulated for their continued dedication to Stanley County Schools. Please join me as we celebrate our own. I would like to take this time to congratulate our 2020-2021 Teachers of the Year from each of our schools in the district.
Congratulations.
Teresa Rushing, Albemarle Middle School.[293.63][293.63](applause) Jordan Vaughn, Aquadale Elementary School.[303.38][303.38](applause) Jennifer Balkum, Baden Elementary School.[313.94][313.94](applause) Kelly Hill, Central Elementary School.[325.13][325.13](applause) Sandy Summerlin, East Albemarle Elementary School.[337.72][337.72](applause) Carol Garcia, Indy Elementary School.[350.41][350.41](applause) Nancy Barbie, Locust Elementary School.[362.19][362.19](applause) Jennifer Wyndham, Millingport Elementary School.[375.06][375.06](applause) John Williams, North Stanley High School.[388.28][388.28](applause) Kim Shaver, North Stanley Middle School.[402.41][402.41](applause) Beverly Bowles, Norwood Elementary School.[418.13][418.13](applause) Angelina Smith, Oakboro Choice STEM School.[431.34][431.34](applause) Angela Hatley, Richfield Elementary School.[438.84][438.84](applause) Casey Lemmons, South Stanley High School.[446.03][446.03](applause) Nick Weeks, South Stanley Middle School.[453.31][453.31](applause) Meredith Sawyer, Stanley Academy Learning Center.[465.97][465.97](applause) Stacy Sawyers, Stanley Early College.[482.53][482.53](applause) Christina Cole, Stanley STEM Early College.[494.13][494.13](applause) Karen Morton, Stanfield Elementary School.[501.56][501.56](applause) Sam McFarland, West Stanley High School.[508.66][508.66](applause) And Katie Udi, West Stanley Middle School.[521.33][521.33](applause) We are grateful that each of those outstanding teachers chooses to call Stanley County Schools home. Congratulations to each of these honorees as they have been recognized by the colleagues from their schools. At this time, I would like to recognize the three finalists for Stanley County Schools' 2020-2021 Teacher of the Year. Ms. Jennifer Balkum, Baden Elementary School.[558.11][558.11](applause) Ms. Carol Garcia, Indy Elementary School.[566.01][566.01](applause) Ms. Kim Shaver, North Stanley Middle School.[576.04][576.04](applause) Our 2020-2021 Teacher of the Year describes Stanley County Schools as "the most loving, open-minded group of teachers who respect others' differences." She says that "the community at large supports education and helps set the stage for the work our schools are doing every day." She says teaching is her passion. It is important that she doesn't quit, but instead gets better every day. To our Teacher of the Year, teaching is not a mere transmission of content. It is about showing the reality from different perspectives to students so they realize that there is an entire world to explore beyond what they know. She takes great pride in extending her students' experiences beyond the four walls of her classroom, opening their lives to growth and numerous possibilities. She says students need to feel loved, cared about, and important in a classroom. If you make a student feel that you care about them, that you love them, that what happens to them is important, then they will want to come to school because they will feel safe by your side. They will feel they belong, they will know what they do will matter. Our Teacher of the Year, during her experiences of the past year, has learned the value of flexibility, always finding new ways to capture the best of her students' abilities. She's joined her students in stepping outside comfort zones to rearrange, be innovative, and find success. She finds great admiration for teachers who, despite challenges and circumstances, always have something positive to share. She feels teachers are doing what is best for children because we know them by heart and we love them. Please welcome Stanley County Schools' 2019-2020 Teacher of the Year, Ms. Tina Carter, for the award presentation.
Can I get a drum roll, please? I'm honored to announce Stanley County Schools' 2020-2021 Teacher of the Year, Ms. Carol Garcia.[723.63][723.63](applause)
Now, Ms. Garcia also gets a check for $500. She gets four tickets, again, you'll be honored at the June Berry Jam on Saturday, and congratulations.
Thank you so much.[754.38][754.38](applause)
All right, at this time, I would like to recognize the three finalists for Stanley County Schools' 2020-2021 Beginning Teacher of the Year. Ms. Casey Lemmons, South Stanley High School. I will tell you, Ms. Lemmons is not with us tonight. She is actually Ms. Casey Thompson now. She just got married Saturday, and she's on her honeymoon. She wanted to come, but I made her keep her plans instead. Ms. Brittany Murphy, Aquadale Elementary School.[828.13][828.13](applause) Ms. Melissa Woods, Indy Elementary School.[835.82][835.82](applause) Our 2020-2021 Beginning Teacher of the Year finds great importance in a learning-to-do, doing-to-learn classroom environment. Real-world application is key to successful learning. In fact, she is most motivated by what she calls "students' lightbulb moments," seeing them make connections in their learning. To her, success is not always defined by students' grades, but instead by those lightbulb moments. She views Stanley County Schools as a close-knit family, supporting students to be the best they can be. We make strong community connections, we care, and we ensure the diverse needs of students are met. To other new teachers following in her footsteps, she encourages them to learn, absorb as they go, take it all in. She believes teachers should engage in professional development, try the strategies in their own classroom, if it works, use it; if it doesn't, find what does. Effective implementation is key. Above all, our Beginning Teacher of the Year plans to support an increase of student motivation in the year to come, growing leadership, community, and other soft skills to engage tomorrow's future in being positive role models in the world. Education extends beyond the classroom. It is her belief that we must build a more confident, self-advocating community that makes a larger global impact. Please welcome Stanley County Schools' Beginning Teacher Support Coach, Ms. Tierney Fairchild, for the award presentation.
Is that a check? Thank you. I'd like to just give a shout-out to all the Beginning Teachers. We had a cohort of 28 first-year teachers this year, and I know we can all attest to what if this had been our first-year teaching. So, they rose to the occasion with great professionalism. I'm very proud of them, and I'm excited and honored to announce that the Stanley County Schools' 2021 Beginning Teacher of the Year is Ms. Casey Lemmons Thompson.[971.63][971.63](applause)
I'd like to just give a shout-out to all the Beginning Teachers. We had a cohort of 28 first-year teachers this year, and I know we can all attest to what if this had been our first-year teaching. So, they rose to the occasion with great professionalism. I'm very proud of them, and I'm excited and honored to announce that the Stanley County Schools' 2021 Beginning Teacher of the Year is Ms. Casey Lemmons Thompson.[1021.73][1021.73](applause)
Is that better? Can you hear me now? Again, congratulations to everyone who was recognized this evening. This time, I will entertain a motion that the board go into closed session for Personnel Matters, North Carolina General Statute 14331811A6; Student Matters, North Carolina General Statute 14331811A1; and Attorney Client Matters, North Carolina General Statute 14331811A3.
I move we go into closed session.
Motion by Ms. Gibson, do I have a second? Second by Ms. Watson, need discussion? Any none of those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Board will move into open session. And the next item on the agenda is recognition of staff. Dr. Dennis. Can you hear me? Anyone hear me? Is that better? Okay.
All right, we are back for our last two presentations of the evening. At this time, I would like to recognize the three finalists for Stanley County Schools' 2020-2021 Assistant Principal of the Year. Ms. Wendy Harward, Albemarle Middle School.[1104.01][1104.01](applause) Ms. Laura Honeycutt, Stanley Early College.[1114.73][1114.73](applause) Ms. Judith Waret, East Albemarle Elementary School.[1124.44][1124.44](applause) Our 2020-2021 Assistant Principal of the Year claims she has been inspired to educate others because of so many impactful individuals along her own journey. She considers it the greatest honor to be able to work with and learn from children each day. To her, she cannot alone make lasting changes, but instead, she helps to bring individuals together to share ideas that will spark change. Collaboration is key to ensuring that our successes are noted as the intentional work of many. Leading by doing is her way of fostering an atmosphere of trust and mutual respect. She feels as though if she is asking teachers and other staff to modify their processes with ever-changing trends in education, it only makes sense for her to do the same. Being a teacher is hard work, and our Assistant Principal of the Year does all she can to support teachers in attempting to sail gracefully through rough waters. She values presence, transparency, honesty, and a whatever-it-takes attitude to earn the trust and respect of her school community. Our Assistant Principal of the Year is described by her peers as impacting instructional changes at both the school and district levels. She is involved on so many levels of our students' education, maintaining a detail-oriented mindset, yet providing teachers with much-needed autonomy. Please welcome Stanley County Schools' 2019-2020 Assistant Principal of the Year, Ms. Catrice Thomas, for the award presentation.
I am honored to announce Stanley County Schools' 2020-2021 Assistant Principal of the Year, Ms. Judith Waret.[1252.13][1252.13](applause)
Ms. Waret also gets a check for $250, and you'll also be recognized onstage at the event at June Mary Forums on Saturday. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.[1264.65][1264.65](applause)
And finally, at this time, I would like to recognize the three finalists for Stanley County Schools' 2020-2021 Principal of the Year. Ms. Megan De Paschal, Millingport Elementary School.[1286.13][1286.13](applause) Ms. Kelly Dombrowski, Oakboro Choice STEM School.[1292.13][1292.13](applause) And Dr. Eric Johnson, East Albemarle Elementary School.[1300.13][1300.13](applause) Our 2020-2021 Principal of the Year is an instructional leader whose vision is firmly rooted in the power of collaboration. They find it of great importance to focus significant energy on building an environment where teachers come together so that learning becomes more accessible and effective for students. By fostering an atmosphere of trust and respect among the school community, the Principal of the Year is determined to motivate students by meeting each student's needs. To our Principal of the Year, their students deserve the best, the best teachers, the best resources, the best programming, and the very best from everyone who works in the school. They work to optimize each of these things to cultivate student growth. They know, understand, and employ a mindset for asking difficult questions and creating a plan for moving forward. Our Principal of the Year is described by their peers as "modeling what it is to be an effective leader and teacher, wholeheartedly advocating for the school." Another says they are "an inspiring leader who has made such a positive impact on both staff and students, encouraging others to think creatively, ask more questions, and simply do more for those that we serve." Please welcome Stanley County Schools' 2019-2020 Principal of the Year, Ms. Jennifer Honeycutt, for the award presentation.
I'm honored to announce Stanley County Schools' 2020-2021 Principal of the Year, Dr. Eric Johnson.[1405.13][1405.13](applause)
Now, Dr. Johnson, you also get a check for $500, and you will be announced on the stage at June Mary Forums on Saturday. Congratulations.
Thank you.[1416.13][1416.13](applause)
Thank you. Congratulations to everyone. Our next agenda item is approval of the minutes of the May 4th and May 7th special called meetings. Are there any corrections to those minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion, will you approve?
Motion by Mr. Graves, do I have a second? Second by Ms. Gibson, need discussion? Any none of those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. And the motion carries. Thank you. Committee reports, instructional program, Ms. Gibson? Facilities, Mr. Graves?
No report.
Finance, Mr. Sorenson?
The finance committee met last week to discuss a budget proposal for the COVID relief ESA funds, ESA 2 and 3. And thanks to Amy Blake-Lewis, Mr. Terry Dundee, and Ms. Nancy Hatley, we have a pretty good outline of how to use these emergency funds.
Personnel, Ms. Watson?
Yes, sir. We met on May 27th, and Mr. Britt came to us with, he wants to change, he wants to restructure technology, and do we have to vote on that?
I believe we do. Yeah, you can. You can. He wants to do the restructuring, and that will also... That's correct. Yes, ma'am.
On your second sheet there, you have how to restructure this. And if you're going to that...
As this came out of committee, it doesn't require a motion or a second. Is there any discussion? Any none of those in favor say aye. And those opposed, no. And he has permission to make his changes. Policy, Ms. Poplin?
Yes, I have a list of policies that will be tabled for 30 days. I guess I'll go ahead and read those. Policy 1310/4002 is parental involvement. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations to everyone. Our next agenda item is approval of the minutes of the May 4th and May 7th special called meetings. Are there any corrections to those minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion we approve?
Motion by Mr. Graves, I have a second. Second by Ms. Gibson, any discussion? Any none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. And the motion carries. Committee reports instructional program, Ms. Gibson. Facilities, Mr. Graves.
No report.
Finance, Mr. Sorenson.
The finance committee met last week to discuss a budget proposal for the COVID relief ESA funds, ESA 2 and 3. And thanks to Amy Blake Lewis, Mr. Terry Dudley, and Ms. Nancy Hatley, we have a pretty good outline of how to use these emergency funds.
Personnel, Ms. Watson.
Yes, sir, we met on May 27th, and Mr. Britt came to us with, he wants to change, he wants to restructure technology, and do we have to vote on that tonight?
I believe we do.
Yeah, you can, you can. He wants to do the restructuring, and that will also... That's correct, yes, ma'am.
All right, on your second sheet there, you have how to restructure this. And should go to that.
As this came out of committee, doesn't require a motion or a second. Is there any discussion? Any none, all those in favor say aye. And those opposed, no. And he has permission to make his changes. Policy, Ms. Poplin.
Yes, I have a list of policies that will be tabled for 30 days. I guess I'll go ahead and read those. Policy 1310/4002 is parental involvement. Policy 1510/4272, 70, school safety. Policy 1610, professional and staff development. Policy 1710, discrimination and harassment prohibited by federal law. Policy 2440, policy review and evaluation. Policy 2610, board attorney. Policy 3470, alternative learning programs, schools. Policy 4040, staff-student relations. Policy 4050, children of military families. Policy 4125, homeless students. Policy 4240, child abuse-related threats to school safety. Policy 4270, concussion and head injury. Policy 4335, criminal behavior. Policy 5070, public records retention, release, and disposition. Policy 7232, discrimination and harassment in the workplace. A new policy 4341, parental involvement and student behavior issues. Policy 4342, student searches. Policy 4345, student discipline records. Policy 4351, short-term suspension. Policy 4352, removal of student during the day. Policy 4353, long-term suspension, 365 suspension. New policy 4362, request for readmission of students suspended for 365. Policy 4370, student discipline hearing procedures. Policy 4400, attendance. Policy 4600, student fees. Policy 4700, student records. A new policy 4705, confidentiality of personal identifying information. New policy 4705-R, confidentiality of personal identifying information. Policy 4720, survey of students. Policy 7335, employee use of social media. Policy 4316, student dress code. And policy 4325, drugs and alcohol. And I will need action on that.
So these policies have been tabled for the last 30 days for review?
No, they are to be tabled.
Be tabled, so these are going on the table, not coming off. Okay, so they will be tabled for 30 days and voted on at our next scheduled meeting. Anything else from policy?
No.
No? Legislative resource, Dr. Dennis, from Ms. Gibson.
Nothing to report.
Next item is summer school plan, Dr. Dennis.
What we have essentially is our summer school plan, and we, on the plan, we put the times, dates, as far as the schedule. But the most important thing that we need action on is the pay structure. The pay structure we are using is commensurate with other pay structures in the area and is competitive with other pay structures in the area at both the classified and certified level. So at this time, my recommendation is to approve as presented unless there are any questions. This is a sheet, that's it, blue sheet, blue sheet.
Chair will entertain a motion for approval of the summer session pay schedule.
I move that we approve the summer school pay schedule.
I second.
Motion by Ms. Gibson, second by Ms. Poplin, is there any discussion? Any none, all those in favor say aye. And those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next item is curriculum and instruction, Dr. Amy Blake Lewis.
I have an update on some numbers for summer school. The board would like to hear those this evening.
I beg your pardon?
An update on numbers?
Yes, please.
For summer school.
Right now, we are looking at approximately 615 students that would be served in our K-5 program. That would be served with a combination of 60 teachers and teacher assistants. I do not have the breakdown of how many teachers versus TAs, but it would be 60 staff members serving 615 students. To break that down even further, at our East Albemarle campus, where our K-1 students will be housed, there will be 224 students. And our site for our grades 2 through 5 at Central Elementary will serve 391 students. For our middle school site, that will be Albemarle Middle School, we are serving 160 students at grade 6, 110 at grade 7, and 128 at grade 8. We do not have actual confirmation from these students yet. As middle school students, when they get a little older, have a little more independence, there may not be the turnout there, but that is the targeted number at present. And we have 47 middle school teachers who will be working with that population. We've identified 22 high school teachers, but we are still waiting for some final grades to be computated before we are able to tell you a number of high school students that will be served in summer school. And just as a reminder, our summer school for high school will target primarily credit recovery, so students who were not successful in a course either in the fall or the spring, but also students who were not successful in passing an end-of-course subject, which would be Math 1, Math 3, English 2, and the other one is leaving my head right now. I apologize. Tim?
English 2, Biology, Math 3.
Biology, it's biology, not a science person, biology. And that would be our target. Any questions? We have the 60 at the elementary, the 47 at middle school, and the 22 at high school, and that will cover the numbers that I just shared with you.
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Have we talked about how we're going to address the attendance?
The statute itself does not address an attendance policy per se, but we are recommending to parents that if your child enrolls, that they come the four days each week, and that it be for that duration of six weeks, because the intent, of course, in this summer program is to close learning gaps, and we can't really close gaps if students aren't attending. For our students who are attending as part of the Read to Achieve, those students, it's particularly important for them to attend, as there is an assessment at the end that will determine their proficiency in reading.
Yes, this is only used really for promotion, or not even really used for promotion, but consideration for, in a very small number of cases, there's just really no way to attach just, excuse me, attendance to it. It's very difficult.
Right.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Have we gotten a plan in place for our EC students and our self-contained EC students that will be attending?
We are still looking to see if there are teachers who are certified to serve those self-contained EC students, so I am continuing to work with Dr. Holland to see if we can identify some teachers. But presently, I'm not aware of anyone who is in a separate setting right now who has applied to teach in summer school. So for those students who are served in an EC separate setting, there are some additional requirements for those folks, and so we are continuing to look.
So you're saying you have had no self-contained teachers apply?
Not to my knowledge. Unless some have come in recently, I'm not aware of any.
I think I have two questions, but I think I forgot the other one. Anyway, do all of our students so far that have applied, do they, have they received word that they are definitely in summer school?
Schools have the list, and so the schools are making those contacts. Unfortunately, we do not have the manpower to serve all of them. In total, we had about 1,300 responses, and our numbers that I've just given to you is just a little over half of that, that we have the manpower to serve. So we are targeting those who are most at risk, who exhibit the most academic need.
Our numbers were really high in the elementary, and we just did not have enough elementary folk to cover all those numbers. But we do have enough to cover the ones that we are concerned about.
Yes.
It was just the kids who wanted the extra enrichment, or, you know, that were not necessarily targeted, we didn't have enough to serve them.
When will, like, all these families of the children that are going to be in the summer school, when will they receive final word that their child has actually been accepted?
The schools have the list, and they are in the process of notifying now.
So it's happening now.
It's ongoing, you know, I can't say that they're all going to be called Friday, because that would be 600 and some elementary students. So the schools have the list, and they will be notifying them.
Ms. Gibson, what kind of hurt us was, we had to wait on testing for some of them. That was going to be the deciding factor, and we just didn't get those numbers until right at the end. That's a good question.
You're welcome.
I have a...
I'm sorry.
Yeah, a couple of questions real quick here. Were there any of the funds that were received for these programs, obviously, well, there's a maximum amount, how was that number broken down, or why do we get a specific number versus another number?
Are you referring to the ESAR document that was referenced earlier? That is an approximate number. If you'll see the small print there, it is an approximate number, and that has to fund summer school through 24, through 2024. So that pot of money will be divvied up over the next three summers.
Is that what we try to do, break this down into three equal amounts?
Yeah, and the formula is 20% of the 15, which is, well, both ESAR 2 and 3, and those are determined off our ADM.
Okay, and so my next question is, as far as qualifying, as you said, I'm essentially guesstimating that what, you took all of the applicants and you ranked them by need based on testing and other variables?
For our K-8 students, the need was identified with our screener iReady, and so we looked at students that were identified red, meaning those that were furthest from being on grade level, and yellow with those who were somewhat off-grade level. If a student tested in the green, that means that they are on grade level. So those students who were red were prioritized first.
Right.
Then the yellow.
And then if we had transfers coming in, would they have taken these same tests at their previous school?
That depends. Not every district uses iReady.
Right, okay. And my next question is, and I guess it's just a mini-statement, this is great, I'm assuming these are federal funds?
They are, that is all federal dollars, yes.
So it's great, but the reality is, is maybe in normal times, this would have been perfect, but these aren't normal times, so maybe they should have doubled or quadrupled this, because all the students, even students that aren't necessarily, you know, I don't, it's all relative, I guess, but, so, I do know that a lot of people were excited, parents that I had reached out to me about having the program, and obviously, you can't help everyone. It's tough when you have kids that want to come to school.
Right.
To be able to turn them away. So anyhow, thank you.
One last question. Sorry, I promised this last one.
That's okay.
Do we have any teachers who volunteered that just, we haven't needed them? I mean, could there be more folks out there available?
At the secondary level, we do have a surplus of teachers at the secondary level, but that's where our number is the smallest.
Is the smallest.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Personnel Administration, Student Services, Dr. Dennis.
I don't have anything addition, except for just a recommendation to take action on Section 2. And I believe there was part of it that was going to be...
Section 1 requires no action, the Personnel Agenda, Section 2 does. Entertain a motion that Section 2 of the Personnel Agenda be approved. Pardon me, we're going to pull...
You want to pull Section E?
Section E.
Section 2.
Of Section 2, correct. Okay. And I think that's...
Mr. Chairman, I need to recuse myself from voting on Section 2.
You recuse yourself from voting on Section 2. Okay.
Just that, Section D.
I'm sorry, just the section? Section D for Central Elementary only?
Yes, yes.
All right, very good. All right, with those noted changes, I'll now entertain a motion to approve Section 2 of the Personnel Agenda with the changes just noted.
I move we approve.
Mr. Chairman, I believe if she recused herself from just one section, she has the ability to vote on the other section.
Correct. So we'll need to take each of them individual.
Well, all except for D. You'd come back to D at the end, that's correct.
Okay, so then we will vote on Section 2, Items A through F. So we have a motion by Ms...
Hang on one second. Okay, it's actually Section 2A, sorry, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry? Somewhat?
It's actually, I hope, just so I mean, it's actually under Section A, the teacher contracts for renewal, and then it would be Central, sorry.
Okay, I understand, sorry. The light has come on.
That's my fault, it said D at the top of that paper.
Section A is what you're recusing yourself.
Yes, thank you.
That's only for Central Elementary.
Yes, sir.
All right, very good. So the Board will now vote on Section B, C, D, and F of the Personnel Agenda with a motion by Ms. Gibson and a second by Watson. Is there any discussion on any of these areas we're currently voting on? Any none, all those in favor of Section 2, Items B, C, D, and F, say aye. Those opposed, no. Okay, the Board will now vote on Section A of the Personnel Agenda under Section 2. So do I have a motion that we vote on this section? Correct. So I have a motion by Ms. Watson, second by...
Second.
Second by Ms. Gibson, any discussion? Any none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. Okay, and so that carries. Carry. Auxiliary Services, Mr. Dudley.
Okay, in your packet, excuse me, in your packet, you should have a list of the fees that we're asking for approval by the Board for our schools for the upcoming school year of '21-'22.
This is the capital budget, correct? This is the sheet you're referring to, '21-'22 capital budget.
There's a spreadsheet for spreadsheets. My policy, the Board has to approve all the fees that the schools will charge.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah, not counting, you know, like, school field trips and things like that, but all the standardized fees through the year.
Okay, so this is the fee schedule proposed?
Yes, sir.
For the school year, do I have a motion that we approve?
I have a question. I make a motion, we approve?
Motion by Mr. Graves, I have a second. Same by Ms. Watson, now discussion.
Yes, I have a question. Do we, are these all the same as last year? Have some of them been increased?
They should be the same as last year.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Any none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. And your fee schedule has been approved. Okay, next.
The next thing on the list is actually the, we need action on the Aquadale boiler, the North Stanley High School roof replacement bids, as well as East Albemarle roof replacement bids, and I'll have Todd come up and let's speak about that a little bit, if there's any questions concerning those.
Good evening. I'm just going to go through each one of these. The Aquadale boiler, if you look on your spreadsheet, it's '21 capital budget, I think you have this particular sheet. What I'm asking for is an increase there on the Aquadale boiler. I went back and looked years past at what we had paid for some boilers, knowing we were going with a smaller boiler at this school, but I underestimated, like I've told you, I'm not getting very good at it this year. Costs are higher than expected. The bids will be in Wednesday, but the engineer tells me we should be fine at $130,000. This is something, though, we have to do. The state will not let me start that boiler up in the next heating season. So I'm just coming to you on, you know, the Board said anything over 10% to bring back. Obviously, this is going to be much more than what I had guessed, at $65,000, $75,000, so I'm just asking you to increase that budget item to $130,000.
You want us to approve that individual? You want us to approve that individually?
Yes.
As opposed to the entire, okay. So board's going to entertain a motion that we approve the increased request for the Aquadale boiler to $130,000.
I move we approve the increase for Aquadale boiler of $130,000.
Are there questions specifically about the Aquadale boiler? All those in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed, say no.
Okay, the next item before you is the North Stanley High School roof replacement. You should have in your information all the bids that came in on this roof. I knew it was going to be a formal bid. Again, missed it, about $200,000. Well, I say $200,000 shy, maybe closer to $150,000. Bar roofing, as you can see on your bid opening, came in the lowest at $703,000. But $50,000 of that is contingency. We may or may not need that, depending on, you know, if we run into some unknowns as we start taking the roof off, we'll pull out of that contingency funds. If we don't, then, you know, we could be closer to $653,000. The alternate, I'm not at this time recommending we do the alternate. What the alternate was, if you've ever rode by North Stanley High School and looked up on the roof, there's a lot of conduit piping. This was to build a wall. Now, you know, this was to build a wall at the front, just sort of to hide that conduit up on the top of the roof, is what it was. I wanted to get a price. I can, we can always come back to that and do it at any time. It's not like it's cheaper now than doing it later. I just, you know, being what this come in at, I didn't think this was the appropriate time to spend $30,000 just for strictly, you know, an aesthetic look. So I'm coming to you tonight, asking for the board. I'll bring the contract back if y'all approve for Mr. Chance to sign. But entering a formal contract with bar roofing for $703,350 for the roof replacement at North Stanley High School. That's about $200,000 more than the original bid. On this sheet also, if you'll notice, I tried to highlight a few things. If you look at the bottom, we got about $250,000 we're going to roll over from this year capital funding that we did not get spent in the appropriations. And also that $250,000 that we have for window replacement, that should be all ESER funds. So we should be all right as far as where we're sitting, you know, as far as what we're showing on our budget item, even with these increases.
Do I have a motion that the roof replacement at North Stanley High School proposed budget be approved? Be, excuse me.
Well now, again, correct me if I'm wrong, we need, y'all need to approve to enter into a contract with bar, yes.
Yes, with bar.
Okay.
Or the price of $704,000.
$703,350.
Okay, do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Same here, Mr. Graves, any discussion?
I have a question, Todd.
Yes.
So will you explain that contingency again?
The contingency money is there so that we don't have to come, we don't have to come back to you if we run into problems. Like I say, we, the base bid is $653,000. But if we see unforeseen things, like if we start taking the roof off and we have some substrate that's bad, that we did not know was bad, then we'll pull, they have to submit a change order. We'll pull from this contingency fund. Has to be approved by my engineer. He goes out and looks at it and makes sure it's not something they should have caught on the original bid. If it is, then it's, you know, we reject it. But if it's obviously something they could not have known, you know, just by looking at it, then we'll pull whatever funds we have to out of the contingency money to make the repairs, you know, that were unseen or unforeseen.
Okay, so if that contingency money is not used, then you were talking about the other, the cost of, what was it, across?
If the contingency money is not used, what they will bill me for is $653,350.
Then I guess my question is, do we have the money to go ahead and do the aesthetic?
That's, I could say, I will leave that.
Is that going to have to go back to Facilities Committee and be talked about?
That I didn't, you know, being what it was, I was a little nervous saying, let's go ahead and spend an additional $30,000. You can see that was, you know, not even, those prices were wild as far as what the four people said they would do that for. But again, that, you know, we would have the funds, but, you know, it's just a lot of money. It's just a lot of, and it, you know, it was, it is something we could come back, you know, put it on next year's budget. I talked with engineer. He said, you know, we're not going to save any, it's not going to cost us any more to come back and do it as opposed to doing it at this particular time.
I have a question though. So that's a not to exceed price, the contingency $50,000, if it's $150,000 over that?
If we end up using the 50 and there, and you know what I'm saying, and we still are running into stuff, then that's when I'd have to come back. But I have, I cannot imagine running into $50,000 worth of contingency underneath that roof. That would be just, we take it off and the whole metal decking's gone or something, you know what I'm saying?
Sure. I just want to make sure, because at the end of the day, a low bid isn't a low bid anymore. You just throw them all out the window. If, so so you're going to have to take off the roof to determine if there's any potential damage.
To get to the metal decking, you know, we sampled, we core drilled in spots, but obviously, that's spots. And what you're core drilling for there is to make sure there's, the old roof underneath that foam's not got any asbestos in it or anything. And you core drill, but you can't see, but, you know, but so much. Now, I don't feel like there's going to be an issue on, I've never run into where the whole substrate had to be replaced. And you can see underneath, you know, from the dropped ceiling, it doesn't look bad. I thought that was, you know, a high number. Richfield, which, you know, came within budget, it was $30,000. But it's there just so we can keep the job moving if we run into a problem.
And we facing this regardless of who the roofer was?
Yes.
Yep, okay.
And my engineer, like I say, the engineer, Wolf Trail Engineering is the one that put this back together and they follow the job. And like I say, if it's something they say you should have caught, you should have known that, then it will not be approved as contingency.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of entering into a contract with bar roofing or the amount of $704,000, correct, Todd, total?
Well, the actual total is $703,350.
$703,350. Say aye. Those opposed, no. And the motion carries.
Okay. The final thing before you, I think, Hope gave this to you tonight, I think, put it in your chair. We have had trouble with East Albemarle roof. We fought it, you know, we keep fighting it, thinking we're getting somewhere. Don't seem to be getting anywhere. This would be going back with a spray foam roof. If we went with a PVC roof, like we're doing on some of the other ones, it'd probably be another half a million dollars. Now, like I've said before, I'm not a real fan of foam. It will work. I'll get a 10-year warranty on this roof. We have a lot of foam roofs out there, that's some of the ones we're taking off now that we managed to keep on for 25 years. So, you know, it's not that it's a, you know, it's not a system that'll work. It's a system that requires more maintenance and more effort. But anyway, I come to you tonight with two bids, asking, this was not on the original capital budget request, this will be a new item. But ACI came in the lowest at $160,166, and 10-year leak-free warranty, and I will hold their feet to the fire on that, the trouble I've had with that roof.
And the reason we got to add this is they've tried and tried and tried, and we just can't get it quite right. And so the only option is replace the entire roof. Or we're just going to have more issues, and then that'll build up more damage as things keep getting wet. So I, the last school I worked in, we put the foam roof on, like he said, it will work perfectly fine. And you can get more time out of it. It's not the most ideal, but it will do the job.
It will do the job.
It will keep, you know, the rooms dry.
So this, oh, do we have a question or you need a motion first?
Need a motion. Board will entertain a motion that we enter into a contract with ACI Roof Restoration Experts for replacement of the East Albemarle Elementary Roof.
I move we enter into a contract with ACI Roofing to replace East Albemarle Roof.
Motion by Ms. Gibson, I have a second. Same by Ms. Watson, any discussion?
Yes. So I know there's a lot of work between, how much have we paid ACI up to this point trying to repair the leaks, do you know?
Probably around $35,000. But now this, that work will be part, you know, it doesn't have to be removed.
Right.
That's, that will be part of just replacing the rest of the roof. If we'd went a different way, then that work would have been lost. You know what I'm saying? They would have had to take it off. But what they've done is basically what they will do on the remainder of the roof. And I'm also going to have them, because I think some of our issues is with our drains, and that's one of the reasons it's a little higher, I want the drains reworked. I think that's some of my problem up there is drains. But yes, we probably have spent probably $30,000 repairing, you know, redoing sections.
Right.
But all we seem to do is push it somewhere else.
Yeah, and I know I had some teachers comment earlier while you guys were trying to, where you were working with them to get it fixed, and, and there was, it was creating a lot of havoc.
It was.
So, yeah, this, this has to get done. It's, you know, teachers can't keep moving classrooms and running, and getting all their stuff, you know, water damaged and everything else, so.
And like I say, you know, we were trying, I kept getting them back, thinking we were making progress. We'd find one problem and think we had solved it, and then get a hard rain, and we hadn't made anything, so.
Thank you.
When, Mr. Bowers, do you, are they going to start with this now that we've approved things?
ACI can do theirs over the summer. That one will be done before school starts. The other ones, probably not. The boiler obviously will be, North Stanley probably won't be. Materials are 12, 14 weeks out right now. It's just materials.
I've got a question, Mr. Bowers.
Yes.
Is this the kind of roof we're putting on all the schools?
What we're doing, when I take out the foam, I'm going with a single ply, it's a PVC roof, is what it is. Comes with a 20-year warranty. That's the roof I've kind of settled on as far as going, when we are able to remove the foam and use that type of roof. It's a much better system. It's a system you can sort of, you know, put it on and forget about it for 20 years. You can't do that with the foam. You're going to have to go up and occasionally put more coating on it.
Why are we not doing that with this one?
It'll be about, the cost wise, first off, it'll be.
But are we doing it at the other schools?
We have done some at the other schools. Now, I've done some foam roofs at other schools just because of the cost. You know, we would be looking, if we went and did all our foam roofs right now and took them off and did, we'd be $10, $11, $12 million. It's very expensive. Like I say, we're going to get two roofs done this year, and we're going to spend almost a million dollars. And so we're going to have a combination of those going forward just because monetarily, we don't have the money to, you know, to replace them all, maybe with PVC. Some will be done with foam, and we, and I'm fine with that, I can, I can. What we're doing now with foam, just to give you a little bit, I don't want to hold up everyone, but if you ever go on the roof at East Albemarle, you'll find that what they use for their UV protection was gravel. There's gravel everywhere up there. Well, try to find a leak with gravel everywhere, it's next to impossible. And so on this, I'm having to remove all that gravel. And when they do it, we'll put a coating on it, which makes it much easier for us going forward to keep the, first off, to keep the foam protected, because we can recoat, and then it's much easier to find leaks. That gravel, you just, you have to rake gravel back everywhere, and everything's wet, and then it just, it's hard to find leaks. So when we do use foam, that's what we're doing. We're getting the gravel off, putting it where it was used as UV protection, and using a, about a .25 or so, you know, 250 mil, or 25 mil, excuse me, coating on it that also gives you some protection as far as weather. But its main guard thing is to protect the foam from the UV damage. So it doesn't get damaged from the UV.
Other question. You said the 20-year PVC roof would cost half a million dollars?
It costs over a half a million dollars.
So the ROI is actually better on this, the cheaper roof?
The what?
The ROI, return on investment, we had to do it twice. It's still cheaper than the 20-year roof.
But like I say, it's something you have to.
Maintain.
Yes, it's, yeah, it's something, it just takes a lot more maintenance, it really does. You have to get on it about every year to, for whatever reason, birds love to peck holes in it. I don't know why, but they love to peck holes in it. And so you have to go up there and, you know, patch all these, it's just a, we can make it work, but it's not an ideal roofing system.
I think I remember, Mr. Bowers, maybe a year or so ago, I'm thinking that when you presented some things with Facilities and all of our schools, that you showed us.
Yes, I did.
And that may be something for some on the board or whatever, maybe the next time at Facilities meeting or something, if you can find that again, where everybody kind of has a, have a picture. Yes, because I remember when you start talking about that, I remembered what that looked like.
And that is good for everybody to have a mental image of what I'm talking about. I can try to describe it, but if you've never seen it, you, it's hard to get a picture of what I'm talking about.
Any other questions? I'll vote, all those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Mr. Bowers, you can replace your roof. Excuse me, have them replace through. Right, so Ms. Miller is informing that we don't have anyone for public comments. So Superintendent's comments, Dr. Dennis.
Thank you, I just have a few quick comments. Just remember, June 20th is Father's Day. Celebrate, honors the men who have embraced the essential of fatherhood. Thank fathers and father figures for devotion to family, the sacrifices they make. I do want to give another congratulations to the Teacher of the Year, Beginning Teacher of the Year, Assistant Principal of the Year, and Principal of the Year. It's quite an honor, and what's even makes it more of an honor is the colleagues that they went up against. I mean, any of those individuals that were brought up could, could have won. So I'm extremely impressed with the group of talent that we have in all those different areas. And the only last thing that, you know, as far as congratulations, is to our graduates. Congratulations to them, and I hope they go on to just wonderful things in the future. And that's all I have, thank you.
Board member comments, I'm going to start.
I would just like to also congratulate all the recipients of the Teacher of the Year Award, our Beginning Teachers of the Year, our Assistant Principals of the Year and Principals of the Year. And would also like to extend a congratulations to all of our students that graduated this school year. Thank you.
Dr. Lefler.
I'd like to also mention the congratulations to the people that got the awards with Teacher of the Year and the first-year teacher. Thank goodness for all the first-year teachers that stayed on this year. They have to be pretty strong to make it this year, because it's been tough. And then the Assistant Principal of the Year and the Principal of the Year. It seems like to me, all those jobs, no matter you think of the principal and such as that as being tougher, but I think when you get down to it, the teacher is the hardest job because they are the ones that are molding our children and our students. And I think they've done a great job, especially this year, they've done a really good job. And the year's over, and the summer school's going, which is wonderful. But I just want to say, like I've said every time, that everybody keeps working on some of their schoolwork throughout the summer, and that'll be a burden on the parent or the grandparents or somebody to remind them. But everybody have a good summer, and we'll see you back in the fall.
Well, I echo what everyone has said. I agree with you, Dr. Lefler, what you've said about teachers. Congratulations to all of our. Congratulations to all of our graduates. I wish them the best as they embark on their next journey in life. Thank you to all who are here and when you stay through our meetings with the central office staff, thank you. Dr. Amy Blake Lewis, thank you for working on what, you know, with the summer school. I appreciate that. And then I, I kind of wanted to say too, certainly thank you to our teachers, what a year it has been, ever-changing, but, and our principals. You know, I thought about this, Dr. Dennis, with Ms. Carol Garche, I believe, being the Teacher of the Year, and I know that's our dual language program.
Zachary.
And, you know, that's, that's, that's outstanding. I mean, that's, that's outstanding and what an honor it is to her, and I know that all that faculty there at Indy Elementary, that they are extremely proud of her and Ms. Jody Altry. And that's all I have, thank you.
Ms. Watson.
I also would like to echo everything they've said. Congratulations to everyone here tonight that got the honors, and I want to congratulate our, our graduates. Go and do really, really good and have a very, very good summer.
Ms. Watson.
Right, I could, I could echo those same sentiments. Had the, had the privilege of meeting Ms. Casey Lemmons, our Beginning Teacher of the Year, before she even started with the system. She was out there that summer doing, doing the things to get that new facility out there started. I was caught just a few minutes ago, two of our three Principal of the Year finalists I used to work under as, as APs, and I can tell you for a fact, Ms. Dumbrowski and Ms. Megan Todd are top-notch. Dr. Johnson must be the man to beat those two, I'm just going to say.
Does a good job.
He really is. But I had the pleasure, the privilege and pleasure of attending three graduations, and each one left me inspired and all of these kids that crossed the stage. We started out with the early college graduation, and to be honest, I felt a little jealous of those kids. They, 41 of them crossed the stage with a high school diploma and a community college degree, and it's like back in the day, you know, Stone Age, when I went to school, that wasn't an opportunity. I'm not sure I've been as motivated as they were to take it, but I was so impressed with those kids. And then we, I was at the Learning Academy, and the message I got from those young people, the two student speakers especially, was there's more than one way up that mountain. And thank God those kids are out there doing what they're doing and climbing that mountain through the obstacles that they had, aside from COVID. COVID's a, you know, a huge mess for everybody. And finally, I got to go home to South Stanley for their graduation. It is a surreal, heart-wrenching thing to retire from a place like that and then go back out there and walk the, walk through the mat room and the light room and all. But I was just, South Stanley is a, is part of my heart and soul, so to be, to be there and hear those children speak, the student speakers, we're just blessed, we are in a truly blessed system to have the community we do, the students we do, the principals and administrators we do. My hat's off to Dr. Dennis, he's done an amazing job too, but I think we got the best teachers in the state of North Carolina, we just need to recognize that.
Mr. Gray.
Thank you. So before I congratulate people, I'll just say, it's interesting, earlier today I had to go by the John Deere place to pick up some parts, and the head over the service department there, his name is Curtis, he was a former student of Mr. Sorenson's sitting next to me. And so we were chatting about some school-related stuff, some people there, and he went on for 15 minutes telling me about how great Mr. Sorenson was, and he was his favorite teacher, and, you know, if you wanted to learn, he was going to teach you. He said if you didn't want to learn, he was going to get you out of the class too. But he, he went, he said that Mr. Sorenson, I think, was, was honored or was taking part in some event, and they had a bunch of his former students come up and surprise him. And he, he said he was, he was honored to get the call to be able to do that because he felt so highly of Mr. Sorenson. So I only say that to say that, you know, teachers, you know, sometimes you never get to hear back from the students that you have an impact on later in life, but you have an impact, whether it's good or bad. And fortunately, in Stanley County, like Mr. Sorenson said, I think the graduates will look back at their time in Stanley County schools and their experiences with teachers in a very positive way. So if Mr. Sorenson's any indication. So congratulations, you've made an impact on that, that gentleman. I also want to congratulate all the winners, and I want to echo what Mr. Sorenson said. I knew the other teacher principals that Dr. Eric Johnson was competing against, and, and I had met Dr. Johnson personally, and so when he won, I was a little bit surprised because I knew the other two people he was running against, and the first thing I thought was, wow, if he beat them, you know, that's impressive. So, you know, that's, I think the measure of a person is your competition. So by that standard, he certainly is, is an amazing principal. Couple other things real quick that I wanted to just mention, and that was Julian Fallon, she's here every meeting. She does not leave, and she comes to public meetings as well. So I apologize if I leave anyone out, but I'll tell you, every single, I haven't seen anyone with the perfect track record, perfect attendance at these school board meetings as a principal or administrator. There are some folks here who I won't call out right now, but they're always here in attendance as well. But I wanted to point her out, and Melissa Smith, shame on you for not being here tonight, or else I would have given you a prize too. But, but thank you for that, and we, we see you, so don't think that we don't, and we appreciate your support very, very, very much, because sometimes it's tough talking to an empty room, you know? No offense to the people that are here, but, you know, people get awards and then they split. And one thing that I was thinking about this weekend over Memorial Day was, and I don't know if we have this, and if we have it, man, I'm embarrassed that I don't know about it, but in our, one of our facilities committee meetings coming up, if we don't have it, I think it would be nice if there was a way to remember all the former students in Stanley County that went on to serve in armed services and that gave their life for the country. I think it would be a great way to honor them, maybe at the individual high schools or somehow, you know, somewhere publicly, we could recognize them. I think that would be something nice, so I want us to look into that if we can. And with that, I'll pass it back to you, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next board meeting will be Tuesday, July 6th, and our location will be determined at a later time, once we find an area that's available, and that will be at 7:00 PM. This time I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We're going to vote on that at a later time, that's been pulled for additional information. Okay, so I'm sorry, who? Motion by Ms. Gibson, do we have a second? Second one is Watson, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.